The Plymouth Township Planning Commission meeting will come to order at 7:00 PM. Secretary please call roll.
Kendra Barberina is here. Dennis Sabolski.
Here.
Bob Ostendorf.
Here.
John Itzel.
Here.
Bob Dorsevett.
Here.
Keith Postel.
Here.
Bill Pratt.
Here.
And we have the approval of this evening's agenda. I have no additions or deletions.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda with the correction on page two under old seven old business that the zoning on twenty-three forty-three oh eight one nine is actually C two general commercial.
Is there support?
Support.
Rule by Commissioner Pratt, supported by Commissioner Barberina to approve the agenda with said exception. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we have the approval of the minutes of our September eighteenth meeting and the secretary has a comment on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to move that we postpone approving these minutes from September eighteenth of two thousand nineteen pending further review.
Is there support?
I support.
Rule by Commissioner Barberina and supported by Commissioner Pratt to postpone the approval of the minutes until our next meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And public comments? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to any items that are not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to our public hearing. Application twenty-three forty-two dash zero eight one nine of the General Drive Plymouth Storage. And we have the planners' report.
Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you. I'd like to note that we have not received any written communique as well on this public hearing. The proposed special land use is for a approximately forty thousand square foot climate-controlled storage facility with two covered recreational vehicle RV shelters. That would total forty-three spaces. The site is located in the industrial park along General Drive, which is south of Ann Arbor Road, and also directly west of the CX Railroad. The applicant also owns the existing storage facility directly to the north and is looking to develop this vacant land to expand and then offer the additional use of the recreational vehicle storage, those forty-three vehicles. The site is approximately three and a half acres and again is on the IND Industrial District where RV storage is considered a special land use. In our review, we cite the specific standards of the zoning ordinance for evaluating special land uses. And in general, we do find that this site is not ideal site in the industrial district for such a use, especially given its proximity adjacent to the railroad. It's less intense than some of the manufacturing and trucking operations in the industrial park. And as it does not require or does not have a direct frontage on General Drive, is an ideal use for this vacant piece of property, which may not be as appealing to a different industry that is looking for higher visibility. We do note on page two of our review that on the special land use plan, the applicant must state that no storage of wrecked or abandoned vehicles, parts, assemblies, or other materials shall occur on the property in order to ensure conformance with the zoning And on page three, our recommendation is that notwithstanding any other information raised by the public and adjacent property owners, that the planning commission grant special land use for the subject facilities contingent that those notes are added on the special land use plan and that any fencing along public areas of the facility be decorative in nature. So this would be areas of the facility that customers, clients of the facility would see. Thank you.
Thank you. And is the applicant here? You want to take this mic so you can...
Is this one wireless?
Is it? Is it on?
No, it's not. Oh, you got one for him, Dennis?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
This is nice. It's like I'm on a talk show. All right, good evening. Thank you for having us this evening. My name is Joe Lutosis. I'm with Design House Architecture of Rochester, Michigan. And I'm here on behalf of the developer Eugene Scherzen to speak to you tonight about the proposed storage project as an addition to the existing stow-and-go storage building. So the goal here was to offer some different types of storage that isn't currently offered within the stow-and-go project, that being a climate-controlled building and covered RV recreational storage. We're doing that with a forty thousand square foot, single-story metal building that will have climate-controlled storage, mostly larger units. All of them will be accessed within two drive lanes that are inside the building. So you can come with your, whatever you're looking to store, come into a climate-controlled area, pull your car right in there, drive up to your unit, unload whatever you're storing or load what you're trying to remove. And also store your RV in a shelter where it's going to keep the snow and rain off it because there's a roof over it. Project is, it's a three and a half acre site currently vacant. You know, it's kind of tucked back in this industrial area, not a lot of visibility. So I think it's perfect for this type of use. We are proposing to have some underground detention. I know this is kind of outside the realms of a discussion of special exception, but we are proposing to have underground retention to keep all of the water on site. The buildings will be metal and block in keeping with the existing buildings, keeping the same idea of look. We have reviewed the comments and we have no problem with adding the note that no storage of wrecked or abandoned vehicles, parts, assemblies, or other materials shall occur on the property. We will definitely work with the fire department and engineering during the site plan approval process to make sure that we meet all the requirements. There was a comment about the additional traffic to the site. So the industry standard for self-storage, trips per day is eight. It doesn't vary that much with the increase of units from one hundred to five hundred. It's still kind of eight trips a day as an overall rule. So I don't foresee any increase in traffic more than the stow-and-go site already sees. We will do a decorative metal fence along in the northwest corner where the site kind of is adjacent to the existing office building, office warehouse. Yep, right in there. So we will do a decorative metal fence there and then we're proposing a black vinyl-coated chain link fence where it's more into the existing vegetation and along the train track. So I would, I'm more than happy to answer anybody's questions or comments.
Does anyone have any questions?
Commissioner Itzel? What, Commissioner Itzel? Can you tell us a bit about your proposed fence, exterior fence?
Sure. So we would, I don't, we don't have any images of that here, but it would be a six-foot-tall aluminum decorative fence. Kind of the standard you see everywhere is what we would ideally use in that area.
How about around the balance of the development?
It would be a black vinyl-coated chain link fence.
How tall?
Six feet. The current stow-and-go site does have a chain link fence that surrounds the site. So we would tie into that.
And is the, is it a franchise or company-owned store?
This is a store that's part of the one-eight-hundred self-storage.
Across the street, the three-story one as well, right?
Yep. They just retain the stow-and-go name for the kind of recognition.
But common ownership between the two. All right. Commissioner Postel?
Where the units that are inside, are they separated from each other?
Yes.
By just fencing or solid walls?
It'll be a corrugated metal panel that separates the units.
Commissioner Pratt?
Just a quick one, really. I hear about the fence and it's going to go all the way around. So I assume the access to this area is going to be through the stow-and-go current entrance, is that right? Then they'll just come all the way or back around and put their, park their RV or go to your, your climate-controlled storage, right?
Correct. We do have another gate located right where the little hand is that would give access to come through that parking lot out to General Drive.
Okay, so do you have, is that, I'm trying to figure out, that property's not owned by you, is that right?
It is.
It is?
Yeah, we will have a shared access agreement.
Okay, that's, that's what I was going to ask you. So there will be an opening there on the, on the south driveway?
Correct.
Okay, because when I drove around, will you still be able to get all the way around the building?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Yep, and you can come through the existing stow-and-go site down to this area.
So I assume that's going to be some kind of electronically controlled?
Correct.
Card kind of thing?
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, with that, we will open the public hearing at seven fourteen. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this application? Okay, hearing none. We'll close the public hearing at seven fifteen. If there are no additional questions or comments, are we ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move on application twenty-three forty-two oh eight one nine that we grant special use, special land use subject to, or with the understanding that there'll be no wrecked or damaged, no storage of wrecked or abandoned vehicles and that the normal traffic pattern is approximately eight, eight units per day. And, and that would be all.
Second.
Rule by Commissioner Postel and supported by Commissioner Pratt to grant special land use to application twenty-three forty-two dash zero eight one nine. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Good luck to you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Laura, am I right, they'll be coming back for a site plan?
Correct. Tentative and final.
Next is application twenty-two sixty-two dash zero eight one seven, the Plymouth Park and Eats. And we have a memo from you, Ms. Hall.
Yes, thank you. In light of the applicant and the township engineer not present at this time, I would request that we move on to old business and if they attend, we could pick that item back up.
Okay. We'll just postpone that until a little bit later. So we can move on to, we can move on to application twenty-three forty-three dash zero eight one nine, the Burger King remodel. And we have the planning report.
Thank you, Commissioners. The Burger King on Five Mile Road was presented at the planning commission meeting on September eighteenth. Then it was granted tentative site plan approval, not including sign or facade approval. So on page two, you can see that additional landscaping information was requested per the planners' report. The applicant has since included landscaping recommendations in their site plan. The recommendations included having at least five ornamental or deciduous trees along the Five Mile Road right-of-way, as well as at least four ornamental trees be planted between the drive-thru and the parking lot to the south. As far as their building design, red cement tiles in the northwest corner of the west and north facades are still being proposed after planning commission's recommendation to use a more neutral color. We would like to hear the Commissioner's opinion on this. The LED light band originally proposed on the first site plan has since been removed. For the signage on the property, today we actually just received renderings of the height and the signable area calculations of the menu board and the canopy and the signs. On page three of the planners' report, the applicant's previous site plan had proposed two panel wall signs on the west facade. The applicant has since removed the second wall panel sign, so now they're in compliance with that. The two-foot in height freestanding letter wall sign, which read "Flame Grilling Since Nineteen Fifty-Four," has been removed from the site plan per planning commission discussion. Signable area calculations have now been provided on an additional document, but since we just received those today, the motion to approve the signage would have to be contingent on signable area calculations, since we do need more time to review those for accuracy. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, and I'm sorry, we do want to mention that for the menu board, we'd like to see if we can have that be turned off during non-business hours.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the applicant's received a communication from the Township Fire Department with their comments, but there are no deficiencies. So the applicant is here? Want to step forward? You can either sit at the table or go up to the lectern. Okay.
Good evening. Matthew Pisco representing Carols. Want to appreciate the report and the tardiness of some of the information. I apologize. It's like herding cats. Getting the sign vendors are national in scope and these are being performed across the country. It's been a panic and we're trying to beat the weather. So our apologies. I think they're going to be compliant in Laura's letter. I think that the colored band has been removed from the, from the facade. So we're going with the earth tone colors that were proposed in the sample board. So that's, that's a non-starter for us. That's going away. The one request we would have is on the signs, can that be, if we're compliant with the area calculations, is that something that can be approved administratively? If in concept, when you look at the elevations, if it's something that you're amiable to, we would ask that so that we can, we can get this thing approved and out of the ground. If you're familiar with the location, it's, I was very familiar with it in high school. That was a very long time ago. The architecture's dreadful. It's outdated. I think what we're proposing is a welcomed addition or improvement to an existing antiquated architectural design. So we're glad to add the landscaping red, glad to comply with the architectural recommendations and implore you to ask any questions you may have or I'm here for whatever you need.
We're passing along the building materials, but what is, which, where is this going to be used, this particular?
Corner materials.
Oh, okay. Makes sense.
Yeah, just to protect.
To protect the stonework?
Yeah, protect the transitions.
Okay.
And this is, you know, this has been tested from Minot, North Dakota. So we're very familiar with this process and its longevity. So we're quite confident, don't want to mention competitors' names, but the color field in other fast food restaurants, you'll notice there's this move towards earth tones, aluminum canopy, things of that nature. We're really quite pleased that this, this will be quite a transition.
I actually know where Minot is.
So do I, floating out of it many times. Yeah, it's a very chilly place out of November and February.
Questions or comments? Commissioner Postel?
Is there any difference in the egress and the roads in and out?
No. Nothing has changed on the site. We are proposing the menu board changes as far as shutting off. When we go dark, the stores open from zero-six-hundred to zero hour midnight. After that, there's no purpose to keep it on. We'll gladly turn it off. We don't want to encourage people to queue because they would think it's open and they're not. That would probably disorient the customers and make them mad.
How long will the store be closed while you remodel?
Four to six weeks. We hope to compress the time schedule, quite honestly. We're in for building permit review just to have them look at the interior so that we can work through these issues once we have your thoughtful review. And if we pass, we're going to immediately try and pull a building permit so we can start. It has been bid. It has been awarded. Any changes that occur this evening as a result, I'll issue a construction bulletin and drawings to that effect. It'll start immediately upon the building department granting the permit.
Other comments? Yes?
Oh, go ahead.
Is the interior an extensive renovation as well?
Yes, it's a, it's a complete refresh. All the interior finishes, schedules for tile, ceiling, lighting. It's, it's going to be a very fresh store.
And does the footprint change at all on this?
No. No, and that's, again, back to the Minot comment. We really tried to encapsulate the same footprint so that, we know drive-through restaurants and fast food restaurants carry some particular burden when it comes to special uses and things of that nature. So we're trying not to change footprints to take that heartburn out of it and work within the existing confines of the building. And, and I think the trend is we don't need a larger sit-down area within the stores. I think people are much more inclined to do the drive-through or walk-in and walk-out than they used to.
Okay. Commissioner Pratt?
Just a quick question on, on the signage. If you go back, would you go back to the, I'm looking at this drawing here and I see the monument sign. Are there any, going to be any changes to that monument sign at all?
No, no, that only has is Addwood One on Sheldon. What we're really looking at is the tower.
No, I, I understand that. I'm just trying to make sure that that, that monument sign is going to stay the same.
No, it, it will.
Okay.
That's very representative of our current brand identity, so that's, that's perfectly fine.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Are we ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve final site plan on twenty-three forty-three oh eight one nine with the signage calculations on administrative review, subject to the zoning ordinance limitations.
And also about the menu boards, the amount during?
Okay. And the menu board being turned off when the business closes?
Support.
Rule by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barberina to approve final site plan for a subject to set conditions for application twenty-three forty-three dash zero eight one nine. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Bless your hearts. Thank you.
Okay. Congratulations. Good luck. Oh, I bet you.
I bet you will.
Tomorrow, tomorrow morning, we'll, we'll be out there. Okay, well, we can continue to move on with the planning and zoning monthly report, so how or?
The report covers the activities in September. If there's any questions on specific projects, we're happy to update you.
Does anyone have any questions or comments on the report? Okay. And next is the discuss, oh, yes, okay. So is there a motion to receive and file?
I move to receive and file.
Support.
Rule by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barberina to receive and file the monthly report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we will receive the information from the township attorney on the Open Meetings Act, electronic mail, et cetera. Any questions or comments on that?
I guess my concern here, and as I read through these memos that we got, it seems as though the focus of both memos is items that are coming before the commission. Where I generated this question initially was because of my role as liaison to the zoning board. And it wasn't an item that was coming before the commission, but I wanted, I thought that it would be valuable to have commissioners' opinions on, on that certain item that was coming before the zoning board of appeals. And, and that's where we, I think we generated some of this discussion. I guess my thought process is I understand about the Open Meetings Act and group of emails and so forth, but is there anything wrong with my solicitation, individual solicitation of planning commission members about any particular item coming before the zoning board of appeals?
From my lay perspective, you know, the memo said, you know, one individual outlines how, how email should be sent. I have, I share the same view as you do, Bill, but also in the, in these memos, you know, there's a definition of deliberation and that kind of thing. And I, I would consider that more of a deliberation, offers, offers of opinion from individuals to you who sit on the board representing us and represent one vote. But I thought about this after reading it and my feeling to err on the side of caution. And, you know, we want to be as transparent as we can. I think all of us hold that. So I think if it happens in the past, you should perhaps send out an email out to the individuals and just have one-on-one discussions.
Good point, Ms. Hall.
Just to be on the, you know, be no question at all.
Yeah, that, I guess my, I'm just looking for a path forward because I, I can see this happening again, that, you know, I'm just the representative on that board for this board. And I think, you know, if there are, you know, the, the one that came, that came, brought this up was the new sign out in front of Buddy's Pizza. And, you know, I thought it was valuable to have at least input, so... I thought it was valuable to have at least input, so if I sent an individual email asking an individual, rather than a group email, is what I'm saying, individual emails to each of the commissioners asking about their opinion on this, on this, on this certain issue, whatever it happens to be, me, to me, that's not a meeting, nor is it anything that you guys are deciding, you're just giving me input so that I can act properly as the liaison to the planning commission on the zoning board of appeals.
No, I, I think that, I think that's, you know, a very, very good point, so the, the issue is not before the planning commission, and not likely to come before the planning commission, I would not see any harm in that, even in, even in a, a group email, if you're just looking for input.
Oh, so you think I could even do it in a group email?
I think you could.
Okay.
But, but individuals that would respond to your request for opinions should only be to you.
Yeah.
And not to the entire group.
Yeah.
Well, that, that's.
But it's not an issue, it's, you know, you know, what, what do you, what do you think of the color green?
Right.
Well, I like green, what about you?
Well, I guess, just reasoning it out in my own wonderful accountant's reasoning, it would be, from me, from my perspective, it would be no different from me, when we had a meeting or after a meeting, asking each planning commission.
Yeah, no, that's well taken.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just don't see.
So, I, I think within the context of that, because I, you know, I was the one that, you know, just kind of, you know, raised the, the warning, and I think within the context of that, it didn't occur to me at the time that that would not, never come, that wouldn't come anytime soon before the planning commission. I mean, likewise, you could say, you know, this property is going to be developed in a few years, what do you guys think of, of, of that being rezoned three years from now?
Right, right.
You know, not a bad idea, but it's not right before the board.
Yeah.
I, I think that would be okay.
Okay.
I would, I, I wouldn't see a problem with that.
Yeah, because I, I just see going forward, if I'm, you know, to.
Looking for advice.
Yeah, I'm looking for advice from you guys as to what your opinion of this particular application might be.
Yeah.
So that I can properly represent the planning commission before the, on the zoning board, that's, I guess that's what I was looking for.
Yeah, I, I think that's proper.
I think it's important that you're asking for information, you're not trying to form an informal consensus.
Right.
Right, I'm, I'm looking for individual opinion.
Yes, and instead of.
That's kind of why I'm thinking, well, why, why bother, I mean, it's, it's not a big problem for me to send out individual emails, you know, that would be like me calling you up and then calling him up and then calling her up, that would be the same idea from my perspective.
I think that goes along with Chairman Sobolski's thing, responses should not be to all.
Right, right, yeah, and I wouldn't be looking for that, and so, that's why, you know, to err, I mean, it wouldn't be any problem for me to send out seven different emails rather than one group email, I don't care, you know, it would take me two, two minutes to, to create all seven of them, so, oh, well, you know, because I would just be copying and pasting and that kind of thing, so, I, you know, that's, that's the only reason I brought the whole thing up in the first place.
Yeah, and you might want to put a reminder at the end, do not respond to all, I've gotten several, in the course of years, you know, a group email goes out to two hundred, three hundred people, and one or two people responds to everybody.
I've gotten texts like that.
The most evil thing I've ever unleashed on mankind was read the reply all button.
Yeah.
I, I don't think we, I still don't think we did anything wrong by it, but I don't think we should repeat it and err on the side of caution, so we're never called into question about doing something that seems underhanded when that was not the intent or the purpose. So should we receive and file this? Did somebody else?
Motion to receive.
Yeah, okay.
If I could just add, I think as a public body, and when discussing public matters, and to really err on the side of caution, for the group email to use that to disseminate information to everyone is, is completely fine, as I understand the Open Meetings Act, what might be an even safer approach to responses would be to, to write back, but maybe to direct that communication to the planning department itself, and know that then that comment would be read as part of the public record. So, for instance, if there's a case being contemplated by the zoning board of appeals, and that information was sent out, background on the case and asking for input, then the commission would either have an option of attending the meeting in person and making those comments known, and then being able to discuss them in a, in a public matter, or by providing an email or other written correspondence to the township and having that read and part of the official record, because it's important to remember that anything that we write is, is part of, you know, a public record and can be.
For you.
Mm-hmm.
So do you, do you attend the ZVA meetings?
I do not, the building department.
So you would pass those along to the building department to be read, or?
We would, yes.
Oh, is that, okay.
Yes, if there's any communication through any of the departments in the township, it, it finds its way to the proper one immediately.
So can we receive and file the communications?
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
I move by Commissioner Osevich and supported by Commissioner Pratt to receive and file the communications regarding the Open Meetings Act, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and then we have the proposed schedule for twenty twenty for the commission meetings, so any comments on that? You can see October, that we would be meeting the second Wednesday of October as opposed to the third.
And just on May.
And what, what about May, can you explain about May?
Certainly, so for the month of May, as I understand, there will be a blood drive taking place here at the township that's already been reserved, so the administration is wondering if either May third, which would be the second week, or May twenty-seventh, which would be the fourth week, would be more ideal for the commission to meet in the month of May.
May third or May thirteenth?
May thirteenth.
Oh, May thirteenth, I, I don't know if you said that.
Well, the twenty-seventh, isn't that Memorial Day week?
Uh, might be.
Yeah, I think it's right after.
Hold on.
Thor, should we be doing this, I guess, further in advance so that we can secure our dates of the third Wednesday of the month? We haven't had this come out before where we've had conflicts with blood drives.
Or, or elections.
Or elections, either.
I can, I can ask the administration, just from my experience in the past couple of years, October is even earlier than I think we have historically reviewed the dates for, for future meetings.
Right, and we've never seen a conflict before with the third Wednesday of the month in twenty years that I've been on the commission, and not for a blood drive or, for elections either, for that matter.
Okay, I, I can inquire specifically and then.
I'm not saying that we can't change our dates, I just, this is something new.
It's unusual. On the May, I, I mean, if, if we have to, you know, move our date or whatever, I think the thirteen would be more appropriate because the twenty-seventh is the Wednesday after Memorial Day, and some people may be going on vacation or.
Right.
And even applicants.
Right, so do you, are you looking for approval tonight and just subject to further discussions with the township administration or whatever, they can't move dates around, or, how do you want us to handle that?
Yeah, I, I believe the administration is looking for approval for these dates.
Aren't all elections in this township held on Tuesdays?
Uh, yeah, there, it'd be August, what, when is it, the eighth?
Something like that, and I think also in March.
Um, there's a March election, there's, isn't there a March one for school districts?
Well, there would be one in August, it's the primary election.
Primary is August, let me check the calendar.
But aren't they always on Tuesday?
So why, why isn't August?
What's in October, that's what I can hear.
Right, October next year, if the election is in November.
November.
Exactly.
Uh, it might be, that might be the training and the, some of the pre-work that needs to be done around the canvassing boards, because the, the election, let me see the calendar here. The primary's going to be on, would be August eleventh, and, so that's after, that's good, and then the general will be November, I think it'll be the third.
Yeah, that sounds right.
Yeah, that sounds right, so this is.
Yeah, so the twenty-eighth, October twenty-eighth, they're probably doing testing, and they got to test all the machines and do the training and the canvassing, it's probably what they're planning for. It's going to be a big election, it's going to be, it's going to turn out, well, they changed, they changed the rules too, so they, you can, you can actually register to vote on the day of the election.
Of the election.
You can walk in, register and vote, so nobody knows what that's going to do.
But don't you, and also, I think it's like on-demand, you know, you can get absentee without.
No reason, yeah.
A reason, really.
For no reason.
Yeah. Okay, so is.
Yes, I do think that's going to be a big election.
So, so I'm hearing that it's sort of, I hate to put it this way, but it's non-negotiable, so, except for May thirteenth or May twenty-seventh.
Correct.
So, how did, what, what does the commission think about May thirteenth or versus May twenty-seventh?
Be more in favor of May thirteenth than May twenty-seventh?
May thirteenth, yes.
It's that April fifteenth that could be an issue.
Tax day.
Yeah, it's tax day.
To be honest with you, I don't care about October because I'll be in Prague.
So is there a motion to approve the commission dates as presented, indicating May thirteenth as the preferred date?
So moved.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Barberina and supported by Commissioner Pratt to approve the twenty-twenty commission schedule, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I think we can move back on to the meeting that we, or the item that we postponed on the parks and eats, as soon as I find my piece of paper here. So Ms. Howell, you, you have your memo?
Yes, thank you, as you recall, in two thousand and seventeen, special land use, special land use for the food truck park was granted at Eccles and School Craft Road for Plymouth Park and Eats, the parcel was vacant and has since really been improved, including sidewalks, cleanup, the installation of landscaping, I'm not sure if the commissioners have been out to the site to see, but it looks drastically different than how it, it had. The applicant and owner of the food truck park have requested to update the commission based on the activities of this first year being open and having a successful season, and he also wishes to discuss the possibility of extending the seasonality of the special land use, which was originally granted November through April, I believe.
March through November.
Other way around.
Yeah, the other, other way around.
March through No-, oh, March through November, so November through the beginning of April, December, December, January, and February are not permitted to be in use. And you have a short video that you would like shown, would you like to start with that, or?
So you want, you want, you want to extend, extend the season?
Yes, you know, thank you again for giving me the opportunity to come back, I can't believe it's been two years already, but yeah, we, we opened in September, again, late start in the season due to finalizing plans and thankfully getting out of putting in an underground detention system that Duane County wanted, but we pleaded our case and through very diligent civil engineering, going back and forth, they allowed us to just install normal sewer system, so that's what, what the delay was, but since we've been open in September, it's been overwhelmingly positive, so many of the businesses are, were in need of some food in the area, which I always knew, and it's just been, it's just been very positive, people have been coming daily for lunch, we're even building up the night business, and people keep asking, are you going to be open through winter, are you going to be open through winter, well, okay, well, let me, let me find out if we, if we can get that approval, I'm going to bring it up to you guys, but obviously, businesses aren't going to close down during winter, they still need to eat, so they love us there, we add, we bring so much variety of food, and I can, if you want to play the video, just to give you an idea.
I'm not sure if it will.
There's audio. So how, how long does it take on average, like, somebody to arrive, park, get their food?
Can you make sure that, that mic is working, because your comments are not being picked up? Is there a switch there, or there's another small mic?
I think it's on, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Talking to this?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, most of the people, like you said, so we're right next to Penske, we're right next to Rao, we're right next to Republic National Distributors.
Yeah, there you go.
Republic National Distributors, and a lot of them walk over and just grab food, their lunch breaks are very minimal, Amazon folks as well, they're, you know, a lot of the twenty-four hour operations, they only give their people, you know, thirty minutes, and so, a lot of it is grab food and, and go, but they're getting great food, you know, that's why they keep coming back. We have fourteen parking spaces, hasn't been a major, major issue, on busy days like Friday, we do have to, you know, redirect people and that sort of thing, but I think it's, for the rest of the week, it's, it's plenty of parking, it's a nice steady stream, there's, RNDC has notified us, you know, they have a lunch break at ten a.m., so there's workers that come at ten, and there's another influx of workers at eleven, twelve, so every hour up until two o'clock for like the daytime crowd, so we have two shifts of food trucks, there's three trucks during the day and three at night, so day shift is nine thirty to three, night shift is three thirty to nine, so it works out good, we give them that half hour to transition, move out, so you give room for the next food trucks, and people love the variety, they love it, and that's what they, the feedback that we keep getting is that they love, keep bringing new, new vendors, we love this, and, you know, it's just a, a need for food, you know.
So it's open till nine?
Yeah, originally, we requested to open till ten, but we did that, and there was a, isn't really much. a, isn't really much going on after, after 9:00.
So this, the, the trucks flip during the day?
Some stay the whole day, some request to stay the whole day, obviously some trucks are doing very well, like barbecue trucks, taco trucks, burger trucks, they love coming back, they, they commit to like three, four times a week. We have 36 open spots for food truck vendors, you know, between those shifts, and we, we fill up quite a bit of those spots every week, so it's been very positive.
So are these long-term contracts you have with these trucks, or just?
Well, I have them sign a contract, we have them, we require them to add us on their insurance rider, so we're protected, and we just have them sign a contract for the end of the year, and then for 2020, we'll have them sign one for, you know, committing to a specific rates and for all of our requirements.
So if we approve the, the winter hours, what, what are you gonna do with the snow?
So snow, we have, I'm sorry, didn't include a layout of the piece of land, but we have, where there's the dumpster area, we have plenty of land over there where we can push the snow. Also, we don't anticipate having five, six food trucks which fit in our entire lane, so we have opportunity to put snow in, in a couple of the food truck spaces. We only anticipate having a couple food trucks during the winter.
During the winter?
Yeah, during the winter, two or, two or three, not the four to six that we generally have. And then, so there's space there, and then our picnic area too, we don't anticipate everybody staying in the picnic area, and I was going to have like a 20 by, our picnic area is 30 by 75 feet, it's gonna have like a 20 by 30 tent for people that wanna stay.
Oh, so you're gonna put a tent with heaters and that kind of thing in it?
Correct, heaters, and then, and the rest of the picnic area, we can shovel the snow in that area, so.
So have you gotten, with this tent, have you spoken to the fire department about that?
Uh, the fire marshal eats every day at our, at our food truck park, actually, yeah, I've talked to him, and he's gotten to know a lot of our vendors because his concern is about propane and that sort of thing, so he doesn't have a, doesn't have an issue.
So you're open, start from, from 9:30 in the morning, did you say, till 9:00 at night?
Yes, 9:30 is kinda, 9:30 to 10 is to have them set up for the 10:00 a.m. lunch rush, and then, yeah, till 9:00 p.m.
And that's Monday through Friday?
Monday through Friday, we've tested out Saturdays, we don't really open Sundays, but, you know, Saturday's hit or miss, but, you know, we're, we're still gonna give Saturday a try, it's, it's, it depends on weather. When it rains, e- even if it's cold, people still come. When it rains, it kinda deters people, but, you know, so we haven't had too much luck on Saturday, so we wanna keep trying Saturdays, weather permitting.
So how long does the average person stay? They just kinda come, how quick do they get served?
They get served pretty fast, taco trucks, you know, they serve pretty fast, like within a few minutes.
Keep them moving?
Yeah, they keep them moving, so, like I said, I have seating for about 36 people, we probably have about 18 people that stick around to sit, so.
Hey Laura, before we move that frame, can you show me where, show us where the 20 by 30 canopy would go in the winter?
Uh, right up against, yeah, if you go, move the air, right there, right in that area, yep.
Right.
Um, on that picture there, it looks like there's a few cars parked on the grass. Are they going to your business?
I think that's Penske, that's, that's Penske's property, yeah.
Okay, and the fourth food truck, I guess on the south side, is that in a parking spot?
That fourth one? Um, yeah, actually, because they didn't space those trucks out properly, you see how much space there is by that smaller truck, yeah, so we have to work on that logistics.
When I was there last evening, it looked like, um, one of the vendors was taking up actually two parking spots, and with parking being such an issue here and such a tight spot, I just wanted to draw that to your attention.
Yeah, we're, we're working on that. Some of these trucks, we anticipated most trucks being 18 feet long, but we've had some trucks that are coming that are 24 feet and 27 feet.
Yeah, this I think was more like the grill for the smoked meat was taking up the parking spot.
Yeah, so yeah, I've definitely coordinated with the person overseeing the park right now to properly position the trucks, don't just let them park. Sometimes they show up early and they just park, and they say, well, I'm already set up, I can't move, when they, you know, obviously, once you have all your stuff out and your fryer grease in, it's not safe to start moving a truck, so.
So if there's four trucks there in this picture, how do you fit six?
Yeah, we don't anticipate filling. If you, you can fit six of those, see that's the smaller one, you can fit with, with those small ones, you can fit about six, but we've realized that having like three to four vendors is ideal because then everybody gets enough business. Going up to that six vendor level isn't probably not something we're gonna do.
So you have a representative at all times on that site?
Yes.
And do you have any similar operations, your company?
No, this is different, I'm a developer, residential and commercial developer, and this was just.
I knew there was one in downtown Ann Arbor that was open for a few years, part of a beer garden.
Okay, yeah, everybody, it's catching on, yeah, it's definitely catching on.
Closed a year ago.
There's, original one in Michigan is up north in Traverse City, it's called Little Fleet, and that's just, but they have a building, they have a bar, and it's kind of, they're using the land to add other vendors. And there's one in Ferndale called Detroit Fleet, same thing, they don't rotate trucks like we're doing, so this is kind of a destination for food truck vendors, a destination for our patrons to get variety, and it's a win-win for both.
I can see that staging your vendors is gonna be your biggest challenge because of the linear fashion of parking.
I'm sorry, the challenge?
Meaning, getting, we were talking about positioning the trucks?
Yes, yes.
It's gonna be a big challenge because of the way that they access it, the linear sort of footprint.
Sure, yeah, that's why we say we, we would leave it to, to three to four at all times, you know, I don't think we'll ever get to that five or six level.
Well, and this has been successful for virtually nine months out of the year, I can't think of a reason why, other than you have the responsibility to remove snow, I can't think of a reason why it shouldn't go 12 months out of the year.
Thank you.
Well, I'm wondering if we shouldn't, i- i- if we do grant, so you're looking for a year-round?
Yes.
So I'm thinking perhaps we should give him, or consider, uh, an approval for, for this winter and then come back in the, in the spring or a year from now, just so we can evaluate the, you know, how well it works with the snow and, and everything else, and make sure you've got the food trucks in the proper position.
Absolutely.
So we'll try.
Maybe six months.
Pardon?
Maybe a six month review.
May, maybe six months, it would take you through the winter, this is October, well, you, you already have approval through November.
It'd be April.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd be more than happy to come back in April and give an update.
That way, that way winter's still fresh in their mind.
Right. Other questions?
Um, is it on the special use approval, how many trucks, food trucks are allowed?
I have a feeling it is, I don't have the approved plan with me tonight, but I think it did say between four and six.
Four and six, okay.
I wanna go to that slide, Laura, I have the original from our November 2017. So to the, yes, this, this was the original presentation that I had, and you see the hours of operation, we originally agreed to 10 to 10, seven days a week, March through November, so 9:00 p.m. is fine, six days a week, and we're just asking to go year-round, and then the total number of food trucks was four to six.
Have you had live bands?
I've had a local musician, and we wanna book other local musicians that are reaching out to us, so I wanna support local as much as possible, you know, so.
Do you have a website or something that?
We have Instagram, and that's the other thing, we have very strong following, in our month that we've been open, we have over 1,200 people following us, so it's been very positive and we love it, so. We use that as our primary source to, to post and update people on which vendors are coming this week, daily updates of menus and that sort of thing, so people know what's on the menu, people ask for, is it vegan, is it gluten-free, so, you know, we can answer those questions.
Glad it worked out.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, as far as music, I heard music last night, any complaints from neighboring businesses?
Uh, I don't think, no, nobody really complains, everybody loves that we're there, like I said, we're butted up against Penske, and then we have a DTE substation which, nobody works there, and then you have a bunch of land that goes to Roush, and, you know, but everybody's, no complaints, so.
You're gonna see, I would think, quite a spike with Wabasta opening.
Yes, the Wabasta's opening, Republic National Distributors, they're hiring 200 more people, they told us, you know, get ready, so that's part of the reason why we wanna, you know, give it a shot during the winter.
Do any of the vendors have online ordering?
Yes, they do, yeah, and that's strictly up to them, you know, how they operate, we're acting as a landlord, so to speak, and we're just providing the venue and servicing, you know, the customers.
Do you find most of the customers decide to picnic in that area, or do they just sort of pick up and go?
Um, most of the people working, like during the day, people have work, they just pick up and go, you know, especially from, like I said, Amazon, Penske, and Roush, that's hit or miss, a lot of people, but, you know, for the most part, you know, people are just pick up and go, but there are people that like to stay, when it's a nice sunny day, they'll stay.
It looks like you have a banner on your front fence or your gate, is, are you anticipating applying for a sign?
I didn't, in the original, I said that there was no need for a sign, I think the banner is just fine, you know, it gets the point across what we are, like the nice subtle, subtleness of it, keeps people wondering too, everybody's wondering what it was gonna be when I was developing it, they're like, what's, is Penske making an extra parking lot, or what's going on, we surprise people, so.
Very cool.
Okay, well, is there a motion?
Um, Commissioners, if I can just interject?
Yeah.
Um, I'm not sure if you would wanna see the, the proposed canopy at all, what, what the tent structure would look like?
Oh.
Uh, the height maybe, like the actual dimensions, maybe just a little bit more time to kind of prepare that and come back in November.
Sure.
Okay.
And then any other changes that you anticipate for keeping it open over winter?
Yeah, oh, absolutely, and, uh.
Lighting or?
Right, and, uh, actually tomorrow morning, we have Mary Grove Honning to give me a proposal on what they could create, you know, and I have Horton's Plumbing to talk about the, the water tap, you know, that's it.
So you're suggesting we wait until we get that information?
Yeah, just until a complete, you know.
So the can, the canopy details and, you know, where will you put the snow?
Okay. Can, can we vote on this, given the fact that it wasn't noticed, that we would be taking a vote to modify the special land use?
Well, it's an existing land use, special land use approved at this time, and I would say it's similar to the outdoor permits that we approved for Home Depot to continue.
But I mean, the agenda of the packet didn't indicate that there would be a, of a, I don't know.
Yeah, there's a, there's a.
Yeah, it's under new business, it's not under. I know it is, but it, it just says a discussion.
Well, that's, that's that, but the agenda calls for it.
I guess it does, okay.
I mean, by, by postponing until November, when you have all the information, we can call action on this for new business, properly noticed.
Yeah, and then this will, uh, the, the specs for the tent and what is inside the tent, that will also be referred to the fire department.
On seasonal extension.
So that they have, will they have an opportunity, will the fire department have an opportunity to look at the specs for the tent and whatever goes inside that tent, you know, propane or?
Yeah, we'll make sure that they.
So we'll have a recommendation?
Review as well.
Okay. Okay, so we'll just postpone this until, well, the November meeting, gives you enough time, I think, to put something together. So, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we postpone until the November 2019 meeting on 2262-0817.
Is that gonna give, that's gonna give you enough time, though?
On the 18th, I believe.
18? Yeah, yeah, I'll have something put together, for sure.
Okay. Is there support?
Support.
Move out Commissioner Pratt, supported by Commissioner Barberina to postpone consideration for application 2262-0817 until, uh, no, the November 2019 meeting, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, good luck, we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
And are there any planning, Commissioner, comments, planning comments before we adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Move out Commissioner Barberina and supported by Commissioner Pratt to adjourn the meeting at 8:05, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we adjourn.